Okay, right, welcome to the scrutiny board, Environment Housing Communities. For October, although we're actually using the September agenda because we felt that the discussion that would have taken place in September was so fundamental to all of the citizens of the city. That I decided to move the agenda along and bring these papers back again. Because they do cover vitally important things for everybody in this city. So. Um, let's see, I'm councillor Barry Anderson, I chair this particular scrutiny board. What I'm going to do is go around. Likewise, so everybody can just introduce themselves, please.
Hi, everyone. Natasha Prosser in Clark to the scrutiny board.
Thank you, Chair. Morning, everybody. Councillor Pauline Graham, Crossgates and Winmore Ward.
Yeah, good morning, everyone. Councillor Jarrod after Little London and Woodhouse Ward.
Morning, everyone. Lou Cunningham, Armley Ward.
Good morning, everyone. Councillor Asker Khan for Bermenthos Richmond Hill Ward.
Good morning, John Tudor, Kilimbeck and Seacroft Ward.
Morning, councillor Kayleigh Brooks, Little London and Woodhouse Ward.
Morning councillor Annie Maloney, Beeston and Holbeck Ward.
Diane Lyons, Chief Executive, Citizens Advice Leeds.
Good morning, Nick Hart, Deputy Head of Customer Contact.
Morning, Lee Hemsworth, Chief Officer for Community Hubs and Welfare.
Morning, Gem Rogers, Director of Communities Housing and Environment.
Good morning, Rebecca Owen, D W P.
Good morning, Chris Joyce, D W P, Job Centre Operations.
Morning, everybody. Sandy, councillor Lay, Otley and Yudon Ward.
Good morning, everyone. Councillor Trish Smith, Podgy Ward.
Morning, Becky Atherton, Streetney Advisor.
Yes, I'm fully fitted mobile now councillor, thank you.
Thanks, Jess. So Agenda Item One, there's no appeals. Agenda Item Two, there's no items excluded from the public. Agenda Item Three, there's no formal late items today. Agenda Item Four, can members declare any interest? We'll take silence as none. Agenda Item Five, I don't have any apologies from board members, but we do have apologies from councillors Cooper and Harland.
Thank you, just warming up. Councillor Ed Carlisle for Hanslet and Riverside, apologies.
I didn't get the name of the officer at the bottom. Mr Hart, thank you. He didn't say his name.
Sorry, sorry, I did think I said my name. It's Nick Hart, I'm Deputy Head of Customer Contact.
Councillor Paul, what does that mean, guys in Rowan? I'm sorry, I'm right, but the traffic's horrendous.
Sorry. I have a problem with getting my buttons going. Sorry, yes. Um, so we're, we're, the minutes, item six, we're approving those. The updates I've got from that is in terms of minutes twenty and twenty-one. You should all have received a copy of information from the head of policing and crime. That was circulated on the fifth of October, along with information on the community payback scheme. And three of us went along to the Leeds Watch Control Room, which was an excellent meeting. And you've seen a summary of what's happening there. For those of you who weren't able to make it, it is the intention to invite wards to come out at a time. One ward coming along at a time to make it easier. Because on the day that I was there, we had two extremes. We had my ward, which has got no CCTV cameras in it. And we had councillor Khan's ward, who have got lots of cameras. And maybe himself would prefer that there was less cameras because there'd be less action going on. But it was quite interesting to see the contrast in how the various parts. And what was more important, and it's something that came out in the notes, is the good work that Leeds Watch do. And some councillors aren't aware of some of the work that they can actually do on behalf of wards if we only ask them. They are there to be asked. So moving on to item seven then, reducing poverty and improving financial inclusion. What we're doing with this one is I'm going to invite Lee to give a brief introduction to the report. And I'll then ask the other contributors if there's anything they want to add. In addition to his work, but the presumption is that everyone has read the report. Before doing so, we will let councillor Walshall sit down, but then tell the world who he is.
Thanks, yeah. Good morning, everybody. Councillor Walsha heading the High Park Ward. Sorry I was late, I was waiting for a Covid test result, which was of course negative because I'm here.
Okay, Lee, over to you.
Thanks, Chair. Yeah, I'll do a brief intro. We're also expecting Sylvia Simpson as well from Money Buddies, but she's not here yet, but she may arrive. So this, I think this report, including the appendix, that was the executive part that went in July, covers where we are at the moment in terms of addressing cost of living. The report covers obviously the national position in terms of what has happened over the last few months. And obviously that's, we've been able to revise that given recent changes because of the delay in this. And hopefully that reflects things. I'm not sure it reflects changes that were made on Friday, if I'm honest. But it doesn't do that. So, but I think that was most of the main changes are in here. And also it covers obviously what we're trying to do locally. A lot of the information is in the executive board. Report from July, certainly in terms of sort of like the council's actions, but obviously we've got colleagues here from D W P and Citizens Advice. And hopefully Money Buddies who can give you their view on things as well. I mean, I think it's, it's fair to say that there obviously were the cost of living, or the sort of unprecedented impact of rising inflation and the impact that on energy prices etcetera has had on, on people is something that we're going to have to keep, you know, a real close eye on over the next few months. And certainly in terms of, I wasn't going to go through what's been happening nationally. But I think it's fair to say that, you know, the, the research would suggest that the impact of any changes now are impacting adversely on certainly on lower income, lower income families. And whilst some of the national changes are welcome, such as the energy cap. It's still a reflection of the fact that in 12 months, those sort of bills, the average annual cost of will have doubled, even though they've put a cap on. All right, okay, I'll come back to that. You know, it's doubled, so it's still a significant rise, although obviously the cap is welcome in terms of some of the estimates about how high it could have, could have gone. So the impact on lower income families is significant. And I think actually also it's fair to say, and certainly colleagues from our partners will maybe be able to confirm this. Also, new people coming in who haven't experienced maybe the same sort of problems in the past. Is something that we're seeing that now. And certainly that when we get onto local welfare support, that's something that we've seen there, that it's new people who've probably not had to navigate the system before really that's coming in. In terms of what we're doing in Leeds, obviously our concern at the moment is winter this year, so we are doing a lot. And we've highlighted in here some of the issues that we are pulling together. So obviously we've got the new household support fund, which runs from October until March. And so that's an allocation of 7.1 million. It's the same as the previous two rounds, so that's for six months. So we're just pulling proposals together around how we allocate that funding. But certainly in the past, the last two rounds, it's, it's certainly the first round very much went on to food support. The second round, much more on sort of food and fuel, whereas the emphasis this time from government is very much around sort of fuel support. And providing that broader support around all aspects of cost of living. And the ask of the criteria this time is that we, we try and focus on those who maybe haven't been supported before. And so we are looking at that in terms of things like carers and disabled groups. And what the bulk of it is aimed on those on low income. Alongside that, we are obviously a lot of, not just the council, but a lot of partners and in the city are looking at developing sort of warm places, as we call them. So these are obviously public buildings that people can go in and we're hoping to go live with a map tomorrow actually on that. That'll identify certainly in the first instance, the council's hubs and libraries that are open and what facilities are available. And but the map will allow other agent partners to add their warm places on in their offer. And so that should go live tomorrow. That's the plan, that it'll, it'll go live tomorrow and we'll build on that from there. Obviously, we've continued to do work on money information centre in the website, and that's a sort of one stop shop, if you would, for everything. All the advice that's available in the city about on sort of financial and money and debt matters. And people can access that. And we're, we're looking at updating the information on that and working with I D S colleagues to, to improve that site over the next couple of months. And then I suppose the last point is we have pulled together a sort of cost of living and a welfare breakthrough group. And that we did a number of one to one sessions over the summer with relevant services and partners to understand the sort of broader welfare ask. Obviously, that's where our focus very much is on cost of living, as I said, in terms of winter. So that group has become what we're calling a cost of living operational group. And they're meeting on a fortnightly basis. They've met twice now. And and their focus of that group is to make sure that the city is working efficiently and collaboratively and doing the best it can to help people address some of the issues that they're facing at the moment. We've set up a number of task and finish groups around that. And there's, I think there's five been set up and the focus of those, one around sort of comm and engagement, making sure that all the work in the city is integrated. And we're promoting what's available in a consistent manner. There's one around integrating information, advice and guidance. So making sure that everything, again, everything that's available in the city is easy to access and is known about. We've got one around funding. That we're making, you know, to, to try and maximise the amount of funding that's available to, to support the work. There's a task and finish group around practical support. So that's a biggie, but looking at, so the warm spaces work, for example, fits into that. But looking at what we can do around food and fuel and other aspects such as winter warm packs etcetera. And making sure that all the work that goes on in the city around that is, is integrated. And then the last one's around sort of reporting. And being able to promote the work that we're doing and, and show the impact and the demand as well. So that's it in terms of where we're up to. Like I said, the report covers everything. It gives a very broad, comprehensive view. Obviously happy to take questions on that, but I'll hand over to Chris.
The, in terms of the Together Leeds campaign, which is a digital campaign, which is great, not complaining about that. But what plans have you got for those people who don't access things through digital? Have you got any campaigns going on throughout the city to bring it to their attention? And are you going to send a briefing to all elected members so that they in turn can publicise it in their own areas?
Yeah, so there's some work going on at the moment around the sort of non-digital stuff. We've got events at a number of hubs. In fact, there's one tomorrow, I think. And is it Compton tomorrow? So we've got that. Also, comms colleagues are working on sort of material that can be published, such as posters and things like that, that we can put up and around the city and certainly using our buildings and the warm spaces as well, plus our own, plus partners when they sign up to promote what's available in a, in a sort of physical, physical manner. So yeah, and certainly we'll promote that through. We'll send information out through the members' email and also, but we can also do specific mail outs as well.
Right, okay. So what I want to do now is I want to go through the rest of the paper and get our guests. And then we'll let our guests say a few words and then we'll open that section up. So if we start with paragraph forty, universal credit and update from D W P, housing leads who, sorry, yeah?
Sorry, I should have said Sylvia's not going to be able to make it. We've just got a message. So she says she's stuck in traffic and can't make it.
Thank you. So our two D W P colleagues, there's nobody from housing leads here, is there? No, but there is from the C A B. So if we can start with it from the universal credit side of things. So what would you like to tell us? Or if you want to just be open to questions, we can do that. But is there anything you want to bring to our attention and that's changing? Because let's be quite frank, in government just now, things change every second rather than every week.
Yes, it would appear so councillor Anderson. I mean, I'm sure you've all read the report, so I won't read it in its entirety. But I just wanted to draw a few, you know, sections and areas in the report, just to draw our attention to it. And, you know, so within job centres, it's, it's been a really busy time and our focus has been on, as you would imagine, supporting people back into work. But also looking at, you know, our most vulnerable customers as well. So some of the support we've been, you know, providing there comes through our social justice team that we have in Leeds that, you know, has been unique to Leeds and in place, you know, for some time. And that aids really to support some of the most vulnerable customers within the community, working with, you know, a range of stakeholders, you know, on lots of different issues from, you know, debt to housing issues to substance misuse. And ensure really, I suppose we've got an arm around, you know, some of those vulnerable customers. And we've also got support in the form of our youth employability coaches. Now, what they do is they're specifically focusing on young people and have a real interest in there in some of the, you know, issues that they're currently facing at the moment. Again, linking in with our social justice team. And because what we're finding is that our young people do have a range of barriers that we need to work with and ensure that we've got that wraparound support in conjunction with our stakeholders. And specifically around the cost of living issues. I mean, obviously this is really, you know, close to, you know, ourselves and the local authority as well. And I think as Lee mentioned there, we've been working closely with the local authority on these cost of living task and finish groups to look at specific areas where we, we think we can help. Some of those areas that are ongoing at the moment are the money information centre and ensuring, you know, we're promoting that well. Working with the Better Leeds communities as well to ensure that we're able to offer that flexible support. And then ensure that we're using our flexible support fund as well to support customers where that's applicable. Because that is, you know, essentially money that we've got available, you know, to work with customers that, that need that. I suppose the next steps really are focusing on building on, you know, the existing relationships that we've got with external partners. And ensure that we're procuring the right support, such as mental health support. So we're kind of looking at a package of counselling, telephone counselling for customers that are struggling to leave their homes, who are having difficulties. And we're also looking at substance misuse support and then signposting to an even, any relevant organisation, sorry, relevant organisations there. And then just ensuring that we're using that flexible support fund appropriately to give that money, you know, and help and support wherever it is needed. Putting an arm around, you know, our customers.
That's fine, thank you. Right, anybody anything specific in respect to the D W P side of things? Before we ask Diane to talk about things from the C A B perspective. Yes, yeah, yeah. So councillor Lee and then councillor Khan.
Thank you for that. I guess a quick question would be around, is, is the team being overwhelmed by? What's the word I'm looking for? Overwhelmed by the amount of work they need? Have you got enough resources? Are there going to be delays because the team's overworked, that sort of thing really? Or are you on top of everything?
So certainly within, within job centres, we are, you know, managing our resources, you know. We have to say it's a challenging environment, isn't it, that we're all working in? But what we're trying to do is we try to constantly adapt. Try to find different ways of working so that if we have got, you know, resourcing challenges within our sites, then we're looking at ways that we can work differently with our stakeholders. Because I think the key is, it's ensuring that we're pooling resources with all available stakeholders to make sure, you know, the customer is genuinely at the heart of everything that we deliver. So we're not anticipating particular issues. I don't know if my colleague wants to come in there.
Yeah, I think just to add a little bit more reassurance, obviously during the pandemic, we recruited a lot of work coaches nationally. Can't give you the exact figures for Leeds, maybe Chris can, but I don't want to quote figures that aren't accurate. But they were made permanent. So resourcing from an operational work coach point of view. And we are quite confident that we don't foresee any resourcing issues. I think another thing as well, again, which is fairly unique to Leeds, is we can redeploy across because it's under one operational. So we're relevant to where the work lies. Those work coaches are flexible and can move around the area of Leeds to support if there's a particular area that's in more need, that needs those resources deployed in there.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for your report. I've read it as well. And fifty-one, it says Eastgate Job Centre will be closed by end of 2023. And as you know, Bermenthos, Richmond Hill and Hair Hills, one of the highest people not in jobs. And it's how do you think they will be accessing that service when we're going through a really difficult crisis at the moment? And we're closing the centre. It's a very well-kept centre. It's in the heart of, infrastructure-wise, next to the bus station as well, if people want to come and, you know, have that service. And it's going to be, get a close. What plan do you have to get that service for those people?
Okay, so thank you. So that, that's right in terms of the Eastgate closure. That's due to happen March 2023. So what, what we are doing is we've got a package of support in, in a job centre that's just a little further up the road. I don't know if you've heard of Park Place Job Centre in the centre of Leeds. So what will happen is those colleagues will decant across to Park Place Job Centre, as will, as will the customers. And we've got a similar package of support in that job centre as we have in Eastgate. So I don't anticipate there'll be any significant change to our service delivery as a result of that. Does that answer the question? Yeah.
If I can just come in there as well, just to support a little bit under her ears, it'll fall under the Southern House Job Centre. I do believe that's their catchment area. Again, same as what Chris alluded to in his earlier report, we do have the social justice team which work with the most vulnerable out in the community. So where there may be barriers for customers travelling into the job centre. And yes, the colleagues already can and the customers already can't over, but there will always be an offer that we'll review to make sure that the needs of the community is met. Once that job centre is closed, it'll be reviewed. So again, that'll be where possibly we may have to look at redeploying more resource into the community with the social justice for those that are particularly vulnerable and unable to travel in. Is that okay?
Chair, if I just start off by saying thank you for this report, but however, for a number of years, I do have concern where I feel as an individual that there are certain postcodes which do not match with some of the workplaces in this city. And in fact, nationally as well, and those young people basically do not get the opportunity for a career path that they, they, they do want to choose. I just want to know what role have we played to make sure there is an equal opportunity for all people living in our city and especially from the inner city areas. And as I said, if someone lives at LS seventeen compared to LS seven in Chapel Town or London. The young person who lives in LS seventeen will, will have the opportunity that he or she will get into a job or into a career compared to someone who lives in Chapel Town, London or elsewhere in the city. In the city, they probably will end up in an agency work where the work conditions are absolutely ridiculous. Amount of work, the, the, the work and the, at the end of the day, they never ever get the same sort of salary for it. In fact, I will say, and I'll go beyond, that it is a modern slavery at the moment, working for agencies. You start work at six, six o'clock in the morning, you turn up five past six or two, two past six. You have been asked to leave the premises because there isn't a work available for you. And it might be a short period of notice that will be given to individuals. And when we see the, the agency workers, and there are from the from certain communities, shall we say, in the city, which have been used as, as, as a, as a slave, a modern slavery workload. So I just want to know in a nutshell, and I have been saying this for the last 20 plus years. Are there any opportunities for those who are living in inner city areas? Why are we seeing certain people in our city from same areas going into unemployment, generation after generation? And why have we not fixed this problem? And why aren't we working with those sectors who are employing people? Someone who lives in, in an inner city area might be better than someone who lives in outskirts of the city. But this person who lives on outskirts of the city, he or she will get more opportunities. So where have we gotten wrong and how can we fix this particular problem?
Okay, so I'd like to come in there in connection with the work that we've carried on from the Kickstart Scheme. Are you familiar with the Kickstart Scheme that we ran nationally, where it was six months paid employment for the age eighteen to twenty-four? Chris mentioned in the report about the youth employability coaches. So that's a team that's fully resourced, working with our most vulnerable, furthest away from the labour market in connection with work. Following on from the Kickstart Scheme to exactly work on what you've just brought up there, the point that you've worked there. We have continued to work with those employers for those maybe disadvantaged, less skills or not given the opportunities to bring those employers still into our job centres to ensure that everybody is getting those equal opportunities. I can also say as well, because I was based in that job centre up until three months ago at Southern House. The close working that's gone on in that area between employers, partners and D W P of Southern House Leeds. Looking at, as you suggested there, the LS seven postcode as to more that we can do. We are so open at the moment to engage with anybody who is wanting to engage with us to fill any gaps. Chris mentioned the flexible support fund. So if there's skills missing and we don't have the opportunity to upskill, whether whatever age that customer is. If they don't have the skills that are needed for the current labour market, then it's ensuring that we bridge that gap by the flexible support fund.
Chair, I wasn't referring to the labour market, but however, I was referring to someone who might be studying in Leeds University. And unfortunately, they live in an area where they're, they're looking for a part-time job and they will never get the same opportunity as someone who lives in outskirts of the city. And now I am not bringing the race into it, I'm just saying the postcode. Now, the postcode could be someone who lives in Leeds. And I'm keep saying it, it could be Belale, it could be Middleton, it could be Seacroft, it could be Gipton, it could be Hair Hills, it could be Bermenthos, it could be Armley, it could be Bramley. It could be Stanningley and these are, and could be Chapel Town. These are the areas we want to, should be concentrating. And these are the areas our young people are not getting the same service as people who live in outskirts of the city. And that's something that really hurts me. And I'm not talking about the minority groups, I'm talking about our white working class people as well, not getting the same opportunity just because they live in a certain areas. And that's, that's the problem that we need to fix. And, and, and talking about the slave, the, the, the labour market of things. Now, let me just say it, the Eastern Europeans have been used in agency work, which is absolutely.
It's okay, it's a test.
Anyway. Let this, let's just switch off.
Wait for a minute.
Wait for a minute. Where, on you go.
So, I mean, I think we need to take things really seriously and, and, and work with those employees that are not working with us at the moment and they are not delivering the service. Um, including the city central retail, uh, market. I mean, someone who, who might, who came from a, a wealthy part of the country, uh, he or she might probably will get the job compared to someone who came from an inner ser- it is a, a, inner city areas of elsewhere. Uh, in a ci- they're, they're in the same course in the university, he or she will not get the same opportunity in a re- retail area as well. And they will be forced to go into work in a, in a warehouse, uh, uh, with the agency work. And by the time they will finish, uh, a twelve-hour shift, they'll be neckered. And, and how do you expect them to study then? Uh, on the same note, rather than having a job where they can be relaxed and feel more comfortable, and then they, they can carry on. And these are the generation that we want to see running our country in the future. But unfortunately, I feel as an individual, we are not doing enough to make sure the postcode business needs to be addressed.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, I mean, you're responsible for many things in the civil service, but I don't know.
I think to be fair, i- it's, it's not necessarily one for D W P to answer to the employers that. Yeah, the job centre, but the job centre, the employees that we engage with are the customers who are on universal credit. So I think if there are postcode areas that are at disadvantage, we're on universal credit, then there's things that we can do. If they're not on universal credit, unfortunately, I can't influence that employer or, or your concerns that you've raised there.
Bring in, uh, Lee and his team. Are you noticing any evidence of that at the hubs that we've got, that you can give us any uh, further information to either reassure or to back up what councillor Actar is saying?
Yeah, thanks councillor Anderson. I think, you know, in the inner city areas, we, we do get more people with more complex support needs, I suppose. So, um, in the community hubs, for example, we've got the Job Shop Employment Support, so um, rather than just people dropping in and getting that support, now we've just got, got a contract, um, in place that's, um, ESIF funded. Um, and we can, we can provide intensive case-loaded support to people with multiple barriers to employment. Um, we get a lot of those customers and that cohort accessing, um, inner city sites. So I, I would say indicatively, I, I can see, I can see where you, you, you're coming from with your points. Um, I don't think there's anything you can do in terms of sort of waving the magic wand at it, you know. We can do, always do more, we can work in partnership, we can collaborate more, um, encourage people to access the right services. Um, but yeah, I think, you know, you, you do tend to get, uh, a sort of more of a layer of complexity in the inner city sites. I, I agree with what you're saying there.
I mean, is there a, you, we, Lee mentioned a number of task and finish groups that were, uh, is there any task and finish group looking at, into the issue that councillor Actar has brought up? And if not, should you be?
I mean, I think some of the issues that councillor Actar has raised are most systematic and the infrastructure issues, are they? The task and finish groups we've talked about around specifically around the sort of short-term cost to live in issues, which ain't going to address that. I mean, we can certainly take it away and pick it up with employment and skills colleagues. Um, you know, because that, it, it sits more readily with them from a leadership, you know, in terms of taking the lead on it. But like Nick said, we, we work very closely with them and happy to do things within the community hubs, um, and certainly the job shops that would, would try and help that issue.
And I know I should know more about this because I'm actually on it, but Mr Rogers, the neighbourhood improvement boards, is there anything that it can do to try and contribute to the, to the agenda that councillor Actar has highlighted today?
I mean, because the, uh, the neighbourhood improvement board is, uh, sort of focusing upon some of the most deprived areas in the city, where those issues that councillor Actar, uh, just shared with us would be most acute. I think quite clearly the neighbourhood improvement board could play a role in that and bring in relevant partners together in terms of seeing what more we could do. Linking into what Lee's already referenced in terms of what's already been done in employment skills and their sort of improvement agenda there.
And I, and I really appreciate that now we are taking this seriously. Uh, when we talk about the most deprived areas, you know, one thing I want to see by end of my political career, these most deprived areas should turn into positive and, and the next generation should be given the opportunity. Now, we've been hearing this for the last fifty years or so, these are the deprived areas. Why are these are the deprived areas? Because we have not educated, we have not given them the same opportunity and they are where they are, where they were fifty years ago. So I think it's we, we could move on from there and give those new, uh, young generation the opportunity to have a successful life ahead of them, uh, so they don't need to use their bagging bowl all the time for fundings. And that's something that we need to learn, uh, on, on a positive note. So, I mean, as I said earlier on, there are certain areas and there are, there are, there are, there are communities out there. I do really feel uh, passionate about them. Those people should be given the same opportunity as those people who are living in an area which is, uh, leafy suburbs of the city.
Yeah, no, I think that's been well and truly noted at the top of the table. So I've got four people who are interested now, councillor Cunningham, then councillor Smith, then councillor Wadsworth, then councillor Brooks. So councillor Cunningham first please.
Thanks, Chair. Oh, thanks Chair. Um, yeah, my question is kind of going back to basics, um, around food insecurity. Um, I'm, I'm a bit concerned that we're still quite prescriptive in our offer of food, um, of food support in the city. Um, in that a lot of our services are geared towards, um, signposting people to food banks, which depends, which depends on a lot of kind of non-perishable stock. So I can give, um, an example from my own ward of Armley, where, um, I know of a young family who've got six children and outside their house at the moment, there's a big box of non-perishables that they're giving away because they can't use them. They don't eat rice, they don't eat the tins of tomatoes, they don't eat the tins of tuna. So I'm just concerned that we're still quite prescriptive on that, um, on that side of things and how we can work towards being a bit more individualised for the help that people actually need. Um, and then second on that, um, I just wonder about the, um, about the warm spaces, whether or not is this being funded centrally or are we relying on third sector organisations to fill in those gaps? And I note in that, that we're mentioning that our, our hubs are a place that will be warm places. So in that, are we offering extra? I mean, for example, I know when my Armley hub is open, but is that going to be a place where people can be signposted for warm food and drinks as well? Or are we just saying it's an open space for people to go and sit and read the paper and read books and things like that? Thank you.
Lee?
Yeah. Just on the food, I recognise exactly what you say. I mean, the food, the food strategy in the city, certainly the food insecurity work is very much, they talk about a food ladder. Whereas like at the bottom, it is the sort of emergency support, the food parcel, et cetera, like you say. But I think within the city, our work at the moment is about developing and looking to develop different offers. So stuff around like sort of food pantries and community shops and things like that, where people, for, they may have to pay a small amount, but they can go and they can get, um, you know, that it's almost like the food that they, they need. A number of third sector agencies run it where they produce sort of menus and you, you pay a certain amount each week, so, um, sort of five to ten pound a week and you'll get like the number of meals for the week and you'll get all the ingredients for, for those things. So there's definitely a, that's the strategy to move people off that sort of dependence in terms of the sort of food parcels. Um, which we found during Covid with, you know, they are standard and they don't meet everybody's needs. Obviously, we put, we do support like the so- sort of cultural food offer as well. So there's diversity, um, in that. But yeah, it's definitely something that we are, as a city, keen to work on and develop different offers. So that there, there isn't just that dependency and people have more choice over what they, um, can.
What about warm places?
Yeah, and the warm places, one, yeah, the offer is more than just, um, it being a space, for example. So certainly the hubs and libraries, they won't offer food, but they'll offer drinks, so hot drinks and things like that, there'll be refreshments. They're putting on extra activities as well within, within the hubs and libraries. And certainly in the third sector, you know, the partners there, they'll offer us, so some will offer food. It's very much what they want to offer, um, going forward. And the map, when they get that, so when the map's live, you'll be able to click on, you'll be able to search by your postcode, click on the places and it'll tell you what's on offer at those places. Um, and their opening hours and things like that. In terms of funding, we're hoping to provide some funding using things like household support fund and there's potentially money coming from the mayor to provide some funding to support that. And that's something over, hopefully if that's confirmed over the next few weeks, we'll put that in, in place.
Yeah, I was just wanting to add to what Lee said, uh, there's a, there's a bit of linkage to the, the local welfare support scheme review paper that we're going to discuss next as well. And I think in terms of that, that food offer, if there's specific requirements and somebody needs to access, um, that support through local welfare support scheme, um, we can offer supermarket vouchers. Um, so if there's certain nutritional requirement or, you know, there's, um, uh, health needs or something like that needs to be adhered to, we, we can offer that so they can just choose for themselves. We've also, um, just trialled a cash grant scheme. Um, and the, the idea behind that is around choice and dignity. So we're not being too prescriptive. People are actually saying, if you need that support, here's an award and you can use that on, on what you want. The outcomes of that, that pilot have been really, really successful. So that's something that we wanted to try to embed longer term. And then just to add to the warm spaces, um, comments that Lee made, um, we've just commissioned zero waste leads. And you might have seen last week, it launched last Monday, they're doing a winter coat donation um, scheme, but we've asked them to do hats, gloves and scarves as well. So we're calling that warm packs really, and we're going to link that to the warm spaces as well. So we'll keep adding to that warm spaces offer as much as we can.
I can't see with the light. Thanks Chair. Yeah, thank you. And I do realise that there is an overlap because I have got some other comments on the, on the welfare paper as well. Um, but, and I am aware of, of the food, um, of the food store schemes, but I think that comes back to my point that, um, that again, it's all non-perishables, there's no fresh food in that. And we're looking at, um, people who maybe don't have, um, facilities, they don't have the electric to cook those meals, they don't have the, the facilities. Drawing on, on my experience in Armley with the Real Junk Food Project, if I was preparing food for people, um, it wasn't a case of just choosing food from the shelves. I first had to ask them, what have you got at home? Have you got a kettle? Have you got a microwave? Have you got electric? And I had to tailor their food needs accordingly. So I, I do know that there are a lot of people who do take advantage of the food store, but again, for people who don't have the electricity or the facilities at home, then those, um, those items are redundant. Thank you.
Yeah, no, I totally, totally agree with you. But I think that's the thing with the local welfare support scheme is it's multifaceted. So if somebody comes with all of those needs, we can offer food, we can offer fuel. Hopefully we can offer cash grants in the future, we can offer the supermarket voucher, so we can cater for all of those needs. So if they haven't got electricity, we can give them a fuel voucher so they can get their electricity on. And we can give them a food parcel or we can give them a cash grant so that they can go and get the food on, they can, obviously they can cook it and they can have the electricity on as well.
Got councillor Smith, then councillor Wadsworth, then councillor Brooks, then councillor Carlisle. So councillor Smith first please.
Thank you Chair. Um, just on the, uh, the food issue, um, I, I do agree that we need to, uh, build up resilience, not reliance. And I do think that it's a multi-faceted approach that we need to do. So I'm comforted that, that we are offering that, or at least starting to offer that. Um, but I do think that we need to remember that these people have to be treated with dignity as well. Um, and we can't just tend, send them to a food bank who may or may not have food stocks in place, depending on what donations they've received themselves. So I do think we need to be very mindful of that. Um, my actual point was coming back to, um, my colleague councillor Actar's, um, point over, um, our young people seemingly not getting the same opportunities depending on their postcode. Um, we've got youth employability coaches, um, and we, uh, uh, appear, from what I've heard, to have a, a full complement of staff working in the, um, in the job centre sector. So is there any scope to have these employability coaches working within and embedded within our high schools to try and guide our young people from a, as early an age as is possible and practical? So that we can actually, um, show them what they, you know, if you, if you do this, you can get that. And, and try and guide them at a very early age, because everything I'm hearing, um, is reliant on the person coming to a point. And I think that's too late. I think for a lot of our young people, that's already too late. Um, we need to start guiding them at a much earlier age and showing them the right way at a much earlier age. Um, and, you know, embedding, um, what they need to do so that they can actually thrive. Because as things stand, you know, they get to sixteen and may or may not stay in education. If they can get an apprenticeship, they won't. Um, although I know that they are supposed to stay sixteen to eighteen really. Um, but you know, we, we, we are in danger of losing the entire generation if we don't act now.
Yep. Rebecca?
Yeah, I can come in there actually, West Yorkshire. Nationally, we do have school advisors across the schools within West Yorkshire. Um, I don't know if there's anything else that Lee or, um, Nick wants to add to that, but we do have advisors in our schools across West Yorkshire from D W P at the moment.
Thank you Chair. It was just to come back to councillor Actar's point. I mean, he has an army of a workforce in his postcodes. And that's not what I see when I go out into, into the town. Because I see notices before I even get in every shop, we are hiring the range or furniture land, British Gas, so can't take call this morning because there's not enough staff. So there's two things going wrong here. Councillor Actar's got the workforce in LS seven, is that correct? They're, they're all there. And the shops and the businesses want the people. We are hiring means we want you to come and work for us. So why is there not the connection?
I think from my point of view, just what I, I sort of mentioned earlier on, if they are universal credit customers, we are engaging, we've got a massive workforce, uh, sorry, a massive employer base. For example, uh, there's two retails that I won't mention, but there's two retails that I've personally signed up to work specifically with some of the areas that you mentioned, the postcodes that you mentioned. I can only comment on universal credit customers in that age bracket. So where I have got those customers across Leeds who are engaging with us, who are wanting that employment opportunities, we have got those employment opportunities. So I guess the question is, are we engaging with them? Are they engaging with us? Are we doing it in the correct? Are we meeting their needs? But the employers are there, we're trying to bridge that, but it is only for universal credit customers. And when I mentioned earlier on regarding the funding, that's if the employer's there and the customer is there, but there's a, a skills gap, it's about us bridging that gap that way by the flexible support fund. But I know that they said they were going to take it away in other areas. I can only say the employers are there, we're marrying them where we can.
Yep.
So, so I guess realistically, again, if there's any particular customers or anybody, we refer to them as customers, sorry, our citizens, that are struggling to get employment, who are universal credit, you can personally email me for me to ensure that they're, they're married up with the employer database and opportunities we've got.
Good. Right, councillor Brooks and then councillor Carlisle.
Um, thank you, thank you Chair, and thank you for the report there. Um, so, um, I was, I was employed for a fair whack of time just over ten years ago when the first, uh, well, when the two thousand and eight crash happened. Um, so I'm well aware of what barriers people have to access services. And one of them is that buses are not reliable and they're expensive. So when I was, um, at the time, it was obviously because when I was a claimant, I was living in Armley. And I was, I was signing on at the, the Park, Part Lane, is it? Part Place. Um, I had to walk through the snow to sign on because I couldn't afford a bus. So I'm concerned about those, um, them residents in the east of Leeds, the it's, you know, like, you've got to, you've got to, um, just traipse, traipse and traipse. And it's, it's demeaning and it's depressing. Um, so when you're talking about local deployment, what, what are the specific triggers to make sure that that deployment is happening? Is it about the, the volume? Is it about the, the volume of people who were, who were claiming? And how is it that you, you work out where they're deployed to within communities? Because you were talking earlier about, um, local deployment. Um, I think, I think secondly, in terms of the, the food pantry stuff, um, we've got a food pantry running from Little London Community Centre, um, on a Friday. And the reason it's on a Friday is because it's the only time that we're able to. On a Friday, and the reason it's on a Friday is because it's the only time that we're able to get any booking in. And the the community centre is entirely booked up all the time. So it's not, it's not possible for the local community in Little London to support their own residents because there's nowhere within Little London to operate from. So what what can we do to increase capacity in the infrastructure available in areas where, I mean, Little London isn't a priority area. I understand that you're doing a lot in priority areas, but in Little London, there is, there's, there's a lot of need there. And we just don't have the capacity in order to deliver through volunteering what people need within Little London. So them too. Thanks.
Lee?
Well, certainly on the latter point, I can take that way and ask the question.
Yeah, I mean, I'm happy, I'm happy for you to take it away. The first word on it, but I doubt that you're going to go back with anything.
Yeah. Take it away and ask.
I'm getting this back. Local deployment, who's going to try and answer that one?
I will answer that one. So we're constantly reviewing deployment as as you would imagine. And in terms of, you know, customers travelling, you know, to job centres, what we try and do is we try and ensure that we're, you know, pointing customers to the nearest, you know, job centre. Obviously, obviously, we would try and do that. You know, we don't want customers to have to travel further than they would would need. So we do have different options, you know, for appointments. So we have, you know, a blended approach where we can use face to face phone or, you know, messaging customers through journals as well. I mean, the last thing we want to do is put anyone into, you know, any final financial hardship through attending a job centre. So we do have other options available we can use there. I think the other point is the Flexible Support Fund. If we are asking customers to come into, you know, job centres for any additional support, then we will pay bus fares for that additional support that's beyond, I suppose, that, you know, mandatory intervention that they would they would attend under the U C, under the U C regs.
Sorry, sorry. So so the specific local deployment, how many, how many interventions have been made where where advisers are going into local communities? How many are active now? And what is the trigger for that to happen?
Yeah, that's the social justice team, I think, that you're referring to. So currently at the moment, there's eight work coaches deployed within the social justice team covering the whole of the Leeds setting. So that is where we're meeting the needs of our most vulnerable. Furthest away, it is labour market. So it is about removing those barriers, working in community and partner settings to remove those barriers to get them closer to the labour market. If I think the the question that you're asking, the confirmation that you want is if there are customers that are presenting who are struggling to engage in a job centre environment and would benefit from a community setting if they meet that criteria of the social justice and the need was that we needed to resource more in there, that is continually reviewed as well. I don't want to go out with figures because it wouldn't be found, it wouldn't be accurate. All I can say is that it is regularly reviewed. If the caseload sizes of the social justice work coach are getting where we can't meet those needs, then we would recruit internally to deploy more within that so that there'd be more community working. Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, I suppose I'm asking, like, exactly how many of them are they? And like, how it how it kind of works in terms of that trigger?
The social justice.
Well, the, yeah, the support, yeah.
I'm happy to go into it now, but if you'd like us to have a separate conversation about it, we can do because it's quite a successful model that's been working in Leeds for seven years. So I'm happy to go as as you.
I can't just say, but it's a good offer that because we can communicate, we can let them know your email address or the email address that you would like us to communicate with you on. So I've got councillor Carlisle, then councillor Khan.
I've just got a set of queries which different people might want to pick off. The first one was just around, so with the best will in the world, the the systems that we implement will only go so far in supporting the the flourishing or at least survival of our communities. And so we need, I mean, others have kind of touched on this already, but we need to look absolutely to building up mutualism and resilience within our communities. So I think I had one query particularly, which was obviously, the Covid lockdowns were a really interesting crisis experience. And although it's it's a very different crisis to the crisis we're in now, I think yeah, there must have been learning there from the looking at the kind of remarkable upsurge in, I suppose, people just looking out for one another, people being yeah, people being mutual in our communities. I think something that strikes me at the moment is, you know, we have the benefit that during during lockdown, most people, most people weren't working. So people had time for one another. It'd be interesting to look at campaigns and communication around how we could enable communities to think about how a wide, a wide number of people in our communities, a wide number of citizens taking even a small amount of time to take steps can kind of lever in real change. So something about mutualism then and and how we're best levering that into place. My other query was just around private rental rents at the moment. So that that's something that's really struck me. I'm sure my colleagues as well, like private rental has just massively gone up in the last year or two. And I'm just interested to know what we can do about that. It might well be on beyond the scope of this scrutiny board, but even, you know, looking even at rent controls or whatever. I just don't know what what we can do, but I'd be interested to hear more. And finally, this was specifically a query for Money Buddies and who appreciate aren't, I think aren't here, and related organisations. I'm just really struck by the the real dislocation between this, and they're doing really, really good work. But I'm also struck that there's a whole load of people, particularly as I see it in kind of new migrant communities, who are really dislocated from that work and and kind of really and and the, I think, the spheres in which that work operates. I'm interested to know how that work could be extended into those communities. And I'm particularly interested in the idea of cascading knowledge around or or ideas around budgeting, et cetera, into not just, not just the third sector, like the third sector is fine, but a wide range of people don't engage with the third sector. I'm interested in those extra spaces like, but like, it sounds, yeah, like barber shops, hairdressers, places, places of faith where communities really are gathering and how we can best get information through those channels around budgeting, et cetera.
And certainly on the mutualism, that's something we've had a conversation with third sector colleagues around about trying to build that in. And certainly something that we're keen to do through the warm spaces actually in looking at volunteers. So the third sector are very keen to to look at not only, you know, in terms of what volunteers can come and help third sector, but actually bring some of their skills and experience to provide for people who are there as well. So that's, that is, it's a live conversation at the moment and it's going on. So happy to 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 bring stuff back on on that because it's definitely something third sector are very keen on. And as you say, coming out of Covid, it was a key lesson, lesson learned. So on that, private rented, I hand on heart, James might be able to come in on that one, if that's all right. And I don't know if on terms of happy to pick up the conversation about the sort of dislocation. I don't know if Diane might have a comment on that in terms of sort of how we get to engage.
Bring Diane in in a minute. She's never had a quiet tension. I think things are about to eat up for a move on to the next, the next section. But we'll also as well follow up with Money Buddies, the questions that you raised to try and get answers on them. James, do you want to come back on the private rented sector?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Whilst the local authority does have a role to play in regulating the private rental sector, we don't have any influence or control over market rents. They are sort of influenced by the market out there. Our regulatory functions are more about the condition of the the properties and what enforcement actually can take where they are inappropriate in terms of legal standards. And you also referenced migrant communities, which clearly is always a significant issue for a city like Leeds. It's useful that there's a report going to executive board this Wednesday, which is a migration update, which you might find helpful, that runs through a whole range of different sort of migration related issues and all the support that we're providing to those communities in the city. So just refer you to that for for more information.
Okay, thank you. Right, councillor Khan, and then I want to move on to.
Can I just come back on one small point?
Yeah, yeah.
Just going back to Lee. So the third sector is fantastic. I've worked in the third sector myself. I think it's really easy to overlook the fact that I would say ninety plus percent of the of of the of the city community don't really have much relationship with the third sector. I think those other spaces like barber shops and places of faith and, yeah, certain key, certain shopkeepers can be kind of key community hubs. And if you think about kind of, especially into the, I suppose, harder to reach communities, I just think we we overlook those spaces and those networks and those hubs at our peril.
Okay, no, thank you. Good point. Right, councillor Khan, and then I'm going to move on to areas covered by Diane.
Thanks, Chair. Just Lee on the warm places. I know you said there's a map going to be coming soon. My question, when will it be going live? And what's the time scale on that one? Because a lot of residents, you know, a lot of our when we're out on the streets talking to residents, they do want to know when that's going to go live. So winter's already here. I mean, this morning, look, I've got a jumper on as well. So you can feel that winter's coming. So it's silly once to know when is the map's going to come alive. Second question on the Household Support Fund. We funded quite a few organisations within the localities. My question is, how are those organisations are promoting and advertising those services and that they can access people in low income? And when we say low income, does that include people in pension credit as well?
Yeah, just on the warm spaces. The aim is to go live with the map tomorrow. So that's what we're working on, hopefully, fingers crossed. And so that'll just cover the first, the map will just go live with the council's hubs and libraries to start with. But the webpages will enable other organisations to apply to go on the map. So there'll be a form for them to fill in with their information, our opening hours and what their offer is and things like that. And the minute that that's sort of validated, there's a little bit of a validation process to go through. Once that's done and their their information will be put on, will go on to the map as well. So the aim is hopefully relatively quickly that will, that map will burgeon out into having not just council facilities, but working with Bontrachion Leeds Forum Central Food Aid Network and their faith sector as well. So hopefully we'll promote that. As soon as that goes live tomorrow, that'll be promoted across all of those organised, those infrastructure organisations so that they can get in touch with their members and things like that to get that up. So hopefully tomorrow it'll be live, but it'll grow from from there. I mean, in terms of the the second point about third sector organisations and, you know, how do we promote what we do? I think that goes back to what we was talking about before. We are, we have a a good history in Leeds of working in a collaborative way. And we have lots of places where there is integrated information. So the Money Information Centre website and the various sort of documents that get produced by the Money Information Centre and our third sector colleagues are very tuned into that and promote and promote those. I think one of the plans we've got certainly through Local Welfare Support and one of the findings from Covid, one of the lessons learned from Covid is that we're we were very good at offering immediate support, but it's then how do we, how do third sector organisations signpost effectively into other, into the right place to get support? So that's something that we're definitely working on in terms of that Local Welfare Support Review. And the cost of living breakthrough, that whole thing about integrated information, advice and guidance. The aim of that is to make sure that what is off, what is on offer in the city and the support that's available in the city is easy to access, no matter where people go to to get it. So hopefully, you know, over the next few months, that will be better. But we do have there's quite a lot, there is a lot of knowledge about things like Money Information Centre and the what the advice agencies can offer and what the council can offer and other other people like that already. And our third sector colleagues are very tuned into that. But if you know, if there's specific examples where you don't think that's happening, happy for you to let me know and we'll pick it up.
Thank you. Right, Dan, do you want to just give us a brief overview, the way you see things at the moment? And we'll then have questions from the groups.
Good morning. So I think the report kind of describes quite in a lot of detail, just kind of how difficult things are at the moment. So I wasn't really planning to to kind of go over that again. You've got the information there. I can perhaps do a bit of an update on the capacity side, which is, you know, that's, that's the area we we always kind of struggle with. So through the Leeds Advice Service Contract, so Citizens Advice Leeds, Chapel Town Citizens Advice and Better Leeds Communities continuing to deliver that service at venues across the city as well as face to face telephone on online. And you know, after pandemic, you know, face to face has opened up again, everything is is kind of returning to 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 those those previous arrangements. Other funding that comes through, so debt advice in Leeds is really funded through the Money and Pension Service. It's national funding. Unfortunately, that's been through a bit of a disaster, frankly, over the past year, when a procurement exercise was started last year, which then had to be abandoned. Basically, that caused such confusion in the sector. A lot of debt advisers left. We've been working since then. We've had to recruit people on short term contracts, take on people as trainees. It has meant a reduction in capacity in Leeds as a result. It so debt advice has actually taken a bit of a hit, which is nothing to do with less demand. It's entirely to do to do with less capacity being available. We've now heard that that current funding is going to be extended three to March twenty twenty four, and there will be another procurement exercise next year. So we'll wait to see what that brings. The Help to Claim service, which through which we deliver the National Help to Claim telephone and digital support for universal credit claimants has also been extended for another year, which is, which is very good news. So along with our our partners, you know, we're doing what we can to try and bring in other resources as well through other grant funding. One of the one of the positive things that's happened over the last few years is that we have a partnership with Northern Power Grid. They've been funding us to deliver energy affordability advice for a while. Over the last year, they've increased that. So we now have a free phone advice line that actually covers West Yorkshire focusing on energy affordability advice. We actually have hardship vouchers that we're able to distribute through that. I have to say, it's the first time in my career where we've had to actually rely on doing that to help our clients. Think it's appalling. But I'm glad we've got some funding to enable us to do that. And I'm given to understand that that service is going to be in, you know, capacity is going to be increased and extended from next year, obviously, at a time when it's it's very much needed. I'll take, happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Chair. Pre pandemic, in fact, for the last twelve years, what we have seen here in this city and also nationally, the people have suffered financially, but now it's even worse. And if we go back twenty years ago, CAB branches used to be up and down in the city. And many surgeries, I remember. Those days, even though CAB used to exist in Chapel Town, but not far from CAB in Chapel Town, we used to have a law centre on Roundy Road. But then we never had new migrant communities coming into the city, either from the Eastern European, Europe or from the from the Africa or Afghanistan or elsewhere. Demand is high. As an elected member, I sometimes struggle to find who I need to get in touch with in CAB as an individual. And no doubt at the pre-meeting, many of my colleagues agreed that they were having similar sort of issues. How can we work with yourself as an organisation, as a partner, to make sure when we refer someone to 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 your department, organisation, our local constituents or the residents get hundred percent service? And I did, I did sit at the pre-meeting where I remember one particular family who were going to lose their house because they could not keep up with the mortgage payments. The local organisation helped them out. Now the family is living happily after. Uh, but local organisation helped them out. Now the family is living happily after then. But there are many families who cannot afford, and councillor Brooks hu- uh, 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 highlighted uh, some of the issues where people could not afford to, uh, to get into the bus to the city centre and then from city centre to Chapel Town or the taxi. Can you please ensure us this morning that you will work with the elected members to make sure that we have either weekly or monthly surgeries in our wards where our local residents can get the service from your organisation?
I think demand, um, has exceeded capacity. I mean, our organisation's been in existence for over eighty years, and I think that's been the case throughout that time. We deliver the service that we can with the resources that we have available, which, you know, with with the support that comes from Leeds City Council, the national funding that I've described, and other trust funding and other sources. And it's constantly a balance between how we can be accessible to as many people as possible, whilst also ensuring that we're reaching those who need our help most of all. So we do still, um, have face-to-face sessions running in about twenty venues across the city, GP surgeries, mental health services, a range of community venues. Um, obviously, during the pandemic, we have seen a shift to telephone advice, and we have actually seen that there is an, now a, a, a preference largely that people would rather use telephone, at least to make that contact. I think some of what our information shows as well is that I think it's really important to have those range of options. So you've got telephone, web chats, uh, face-to-face. For example, we found through web chats, um, that's, that's a channel that women experiencing abuse find more comfortable to access us through, rather than coming into a face-to-face session. So I think it's important to have different channels that are accessible to different people in different, different circumstances. I can't give you the assurance that we can be in every, every ward every week because we're not resourced to do that. I just don't have the capacity to do that.
Would you agree with me that if the council is part-funding your organisation, don't you think our taxpayer residents do deserve a service which during these days where people are living absolutely in a worry and people are losing sleeps because they cannot afford to pay the debts, uh, what they all, either it's a rent or if it's a mortgage or if it's a gas or electricity bill? And 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 one other point that I made was what, who do we as an elected members need to get in touch with in CAB? Because as an individual, I sometimes struggled over the years with regards to the CAB itself, where we used to have a really good relationship as an elected members. In fact, that, if I remember correctly, I'm, I could have been member of your management committee once upon a time, but, but that relationship doesn't exist anymore. Uh, and I understand the resources, but when someone or a family is going through a hard time, don't they deserve a service that you're providing?
As I say, it is constantly a balance between reaching as many people as we can with the resources that we have available. And I would say we do, we have also worked very hard over the years to bring in additional capacity through the cities. So like the Money and Pension Service funding, like the resource that's come from Northern Power Grid. You know, if we, if 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 we didn't put the work into doing that, that resource wouldn't be coming into Leeds. So we do try really hard to increase the capacity. I'm sorry if the relationship uh, in in terms of information getting to councillors has, has not been what you would expect. And I'm sure that I can work with, with the officers to ensure that that, that improves and we can, we can provide the information that you need.
It's the contact point that I'm looking for, where if, for example, a resident of ours comes to our surgery and say, I am struggling with this particular problem, could you please assist us? And then we need to find a person within your department so where we can get in touch with yourself and say, Mister so or Mrs so-and-so is having difficulties, could you please arrange to meet up with them and assist them? That's all I'm asking. You know, you're, 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 you're just going round and round about the information and the rest of it. While the people are suffering out there, we want to help them and we need a professional organisation such as, like yourself. Simple question is, could you please give us the contact point to all ninety-nine councillors in the city? When someone comes up to us, so we can pass the information to yourself, so our local residents can get the service what they deserve?
Yes, is the answer. And if we, if we can get that, because that's definitely a frustration.
I personally, when I'm trying to contact you, I've got to go through Lee and ask Lee if he'll forward it on to you because there is no direct way that I can contact the CAB. I might have a resident who is reluctant to contact the CAB themselves, but I'm quite happy to take, take the first step. And I've got no direct contact. I've tried to get your personal email address, but not been too successful. And I understand why, I understand why. But, you know, if we had even a generic address or a generic telephone number that we could contact, uh, that you could then triage out from that point, we would accept that because the council have started to give individual email addresses for mowing, refuge collection, trees, street cleansing. We've got a generic email address that we can send things through to. We might have some complaints about the way it operates sometimes, but it is better than having nothing at all. So on that side. The other question I was going to ask to James, do we have an SLA with the CAB as to what we expect from them for the money we contribute to them? Or did that disappear a number of years ago when the contract uh, was reduced in size?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Um, we ha- we have a very good relationship with the, with the CAB and Diane's team in terms of the way that we, that we work. I think we do have to remember that they are, they're not a council service. They are a, a separate, independent, uh, third sector service that is funded in a whole range of ways, um, of which the council is one of those funders. And for that, we have an agreement in place in terms of um, the nature and the type of, um, services that we, that we would want to see delivered in, in, in Leeds. Um, clearly I can sense some issues and frustration from members and we will happily take that away and see how we can respond to that. But just to emphasise, um, that there is a really good relationship in place between Leeds City Council and the CAB, um, and we'll continue to build on that.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Just following from Caster Acta, uh, my question is regarding out-of-hours services for debt advising, you know. And say for instance, if we work Monday to Friday, eight, one, five, come back home, as we said early on. Uh, you see, what do you find a bill, uh, back of the door, and you get worried and there's no advisor service out of hours or on the weekend? What, do we have any service for weekends and, uh, out of hours? And also it needs to be face-to-face because a lot of people not feeling really confident speaking on the phone or being on, online. So it's really important that we need to have that service as well.
I can only speak for the services that are within my responsibility. So as we've said, Money Buddies and other services are not part of my responsibility. The debt advice that we provide is, is not funded by Leeds City Council, it's funded by the Money and Pension Service. Uh, that is funded to be available Monday to Friday, nine to five. Uh, it is available through, again, so we do have, um, email addresses, so people can always contact us through that and we will respond, uh, next time the office is open. But we are simply not resourced to be able to offer services, uh, evenings and weekends. That would take a significant amount of funding to do that, um, which would take away from other services.
Uh, I, I would say that the, the council's community hub sites are open on Saturdays. So there is face-to-face support and provision available over the weekend from our own services. Um, some of the partners will be in those sites on the weekends as well. Um, unfortunately, Sylvia's not ma- managed to make it today, but Money Buddies we've got in, in quite a few of our centres at the moment. I think it's about twenty different centres have got Money Buddies in them. So there is an element of, uh, face-to-face support available over the weekends.
Uh, Money Buddies are based in Beaumont, which is Middel. I know the organisation really well and do often task to work like the other organisation across the city of Leeds. Uh, and it's just the out-of-hours, uh, that's what I'm concerned actually. So I thank you for assuring that we do have that service on, uh, on the weekends. What, what, is there any service on the evenings as well for somebody, uh, who's working, what, so, yeah, evenings?
I, I don't, I don't want to give you the wrong information, so I'd have to go back and check with Sylvia what evenings they've got available. Um, but I can do that and take that away and, and bring that back.
Thank you, um, and thank you, Diane, for coming. Um, you've been giving a hard time, to be fair, um, perhaps unfairly uh, by ward members. Um, uh, I just wanted, or just to go firstly, I think most of us didn't know that there were twenty outreach clinics still taking place. I think it would be nice if we knew where they were. There was always, after the closure of the Ottley branch, uh, the CAB, there was always, um, the surgery at Westgate that, um, the CAB went to. I don't know whether that still continues. And perhaps as a ward member and my other colleagues would like to know whether that's still, and the same for other ward members uh, in their areas, uh, where these outreach clinics are taking place. So that would be a first thing. As councillor Anderson has already said, um, and, and councillor Actar, um, something like a war, uh, a elected members at Leeds CAB, generic email, um, uh, would help us. Um, and it would go into your central pot and you'd be able to then dish it out. At the moment, we just don't know where to go. And we go into a, a, a resource that everybody else goes into. And, um, with the best will in the world, uh, world, I suspect some of those, uh, inquiries are lost. Um, where with a dedicated email address, that would be, um, a bit more helpful. I did really want to pick up on paragraph sixty-six on page seventeen, the very first par- paragraph, uh, because with our colleagues from the D W P here, um, fifty per cent, almost fifty per cent of, uh, your, uh, all benefit inquiries is around universal credit, um, and, uh, relates to the initial claim. Can you just elaborate on that a bit more whilst we have our D W P colleagues here? And are they aware that you're getting so many inquiries about their service and its initial, uh, and their, the initial claim process? Thank you.
Yes, to be clear, that data includes the Help to Claim Service, which is funded by the D W P specifically to help people with their initial claim through to receipt of the first payment. So that is why it's so high. Uh, Leeds is one of sixty offices in the country that's delivering that national service. So that's why it's such a high proportion.
So that's more a case of supporting them to apply or, or helping them to appeal or complaints about the length of time it takes for their claim to be paid, their initial claim? Um, what, what is, what are those forty-eight per cent?
So all, yes, all of that. So it, it is, it is about helping people to get their claim in. Um, and, and as I say, to support them to receipt of their first payment. So if there are difficulties around that, so if people have got difficulties around, they haven't got adequate ID, or that, you know, there may be particular evidence that they need to supply. So we would support them through that process to enable them. So it's not just make your claim, but make sure that they're actually getting their payment.
And is it still five weeks for an initial application to first payment? And is that, it's really not aimed at you this time, Diane, but more, more, more our D D W D colleagues. Is it still five weeks and do we feel that that is still far too long?
I don't think I'm, I can, I can't comment, but yes, but it's a calendar month plus a week. So yes, you're talking up to five weeks for the first payment to be released. But there is always the, um, option of claiming in advance, but, um, that is still available. But yeah, it's not my place to comment on.
So I was gonna ask a question, just wanted to quickly come in on the advice services available because the members have been asking quite a lot of questions on where to access that information, councillor Lay, at the last one. So, um, I was just gonna refer them to the Money Information Centre webpage because we collate all of that information, informal and formal advice services in the city. Uh, and it's readily accessible and it's got all the current information on that, on that page. I brought some leaflets in terms of the generic advice and energy-specific advice. Members are welcome to take them as well. Um, but that's a really good resource and it is current.
It might be worthwhile, I accept that you do put this out to us, is to maybe once every six months reiterate and reissue the, the messages again, or more regularly if you can. But I think some people get it, use it, but then not necessarily remember where all the different sources are. And with sometimes the council's email, uh, website isn't always the most user-friendly method of accessing things. But you see, we've also stimulated councillor Smith and councillor Lay to come back, so.
All I was gonna say, Chair, is I think most members are aware of that, uh, Nick. It's a, it's the casework aspect of it that, uh, we, we're, we're more concerned about. This specific of helping a resident rather than saying, this is where we can signpost you to. I think we all know how to signpost. It's the, where do we go when they're, they're either in the system or they've come to us and said, I'm in terrible strife, can you help me?
Okay, and councillor Smith?
Thank you, Chair. One thing I'm hearing very loud and clear today is that almost everything is online. Almost everything is being funnelled onto the online platforms. What if people can't access those? What if people, for a variety of reasons, don't have the capability to do that? I'm very concerned that we've gonna have a whole raft of people slipping through the nets. Um, slipping through the net when accessing, um, different, um, things as well. Um, if a person accessed one food bank today, another one in three days' time, another one in four days' time, where is there any joined-up thinking to think, well, that person's been and been and been? Do they need extra support? So that's one thing that's, that's been confusing me today a little bit. But I am very concerned about digital inclusion and I am very concerned about people slipping through the net. Thank you.
Lee?
Yeah, I think they, I mean, we do, obviously, we have talked about the, the putting the information on the website. We don't just, well, as Diane said, we have a number of channels that, to use that word. There is, so all the information that is available online, you can access through our community hubs and libraries. A lot of the, well, I would say the majority of third sector organisation and food banks also have these leaflets um, available and they can enable you to, to signpost. Nick mentioned earlier the cash pilot that we ran with Trussell Trust with the food bank. The whole aim part of that project was to, not only did we provide people with cash grants rather than food parcels, but there was a sort of wraparound service so they could refer into additional support. And we did that and that was partly, um, what we did. So that's something that we want to, want to grow on. The benef- the benefit of the digital platform in terms of, if I take Money Information Centre as an example, is that we are able to keep that up to date. If we produce a leaflet, in all honesty, we, we could produce it one day and it could change the day after. And it becomes almost difficult then to, to keep that. The digital platform enables us to stay, keep it as real-time as possible, although I absolutely appreciate that a lot of people don't access that. So we do get that information out, um, to our partners who are able to, um, access it and, and promote it. And also through our, if, just from a council perspective, through our hubs and libraries, people can go um, into any of those and get that broad range of support and all the staff there are fully aware of what's available.
Thanks, Chair. Thanks, Lee. I, I, I get all of that and I understand the minute something is, is, is printed, it's out of date. Um, the warm places map was a, a huge concern to me because many of the people who are going to need to access that aren't going to be able to get it online perhaps. Um, so, so that was really another concern of mine. Um, I do appreciate everything that, that you, you and your teams are doing though, and, and, and I just wanted to say thank you for that.
And just on the warm space, there is a plan to produce a physical map as well, so paper version, you know, a document version and things. And just on the warm space, there is a plan to produce a physical map as well, sort of paper version, you know, a document version and things.
There's another paper that's on the exec board this Thursday, which is actually updating on the cost of living crisis. Um, because of the cur- curiosities of the way that we do things in this council, it gets discussed at exec board before it can get discussed elsewhere. But I don't think there's much new in it. Is there, James, that you can probably give us a flavour? Is there anything new in it?
There's new work, but it says referenced by Lee in the introductions. I think when Lee did the introduction, it wasn't just on the paper went in July, it was actually on what's happened since. That paper is a publicly available document, so anybody can access it now and and read it.
Our protocols dictate the exec board get to discuss it first. I mean, it's just we would do things. So thank you very much. If you wish to stay and you can do, but if you've got work to do to keep the industry moving, then you're free to leave. Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, right. Local welfare support scheme. Uh, Nick, are you going to introduce the uh the paper? Thank you.
Okay, thanks councillor Anderson. Um, so at the last scrutiny board meeting in November, uh, members signed off the proposal to undertake a wholesale review of the scheme in its current format. Um, so a period of discovery work quickly followed to understand what improvements could be made to the scheme to ensure the best possible offer for vulnerable residents facing financial hardship. Um, so a quick summary of the discovery work that was undertaken and a few key highlights of this. Um, so we discovered that the eligibility, um, it was outdated and applied inconsistently uh by the team. Um, that often resulted in repeat referrals coming through to the scheme. Um, three hundred and thirty thousand of the six hundred thousand pound base budget was spent on white goods. And we felt there was an opportunity to make savings, possibly significant savings by by reviewing that. Um, wraparound support, going back to councillor Smith's point earlier, uh, wraparound support and signposting, um, not necessarily adequate and and not meeting customer needs. Um, I think it was highlighted in the report more specifically. Um, we were getting customers coming back again and again, and we felt like, yes, we can help them in the short term, but it was becoming a bit too much of a sticking plaster approach and we want to be able to help people in the long term. Um, and I'll come on to what the suggestions are around that later. Uh, referral processes need to be improved. Um, the method at the time was phone only, uh, no online option at all. Um, or or any communication of the outcome of any referral. Um, no formal third party referral process. Um, partners have been coming to us saying that they want this um but weren't able to do that. Um, and that would ease the pressure on the contact centre team as well. Um, so there's potential savings there. Um, and also greater choice to be offered to customers. So we've talked about um creating dignity dignity and choice. Um, but we also want to be able to go to different agencies as well to make sure that the offer that we're we're providing to customers is uh is diverse as it needs to be. So in response to the discovery work and challenges presented through rapidly increasing demand on the contact centre team, a number of key areas have been progressed at a rapid rate. These include the development of an online form, both for customers and partner agencies. That's in addition to um the telephone option. Um, it's not replacing it. Preparation work for a full procurement exercise for white goods, maximising on the social value ask, recycled and high efficiency goods. The launch of an innovative innovative partnership with High Sense um to provide donated stock to our customers. Um, and hopefully that should uh chip into the significant budget we're spending directly on white goods at the moment. Um, and that's a long term commitment from High Sense as a partner. Um, we've also mentioned earlier today as well, the cash grant pilot. So this is in partnership with the Trussell Trust. Um, and Trussell Trust obviously are behind a lot of the food bank provision in the city. Um, they're very keen on a cash first option. Um. Obviously, some of the issues that have been brought up today around the food banks in terms of supply versus demand. Um, you know, cash first would uh would would help to meet that. Um, and we've got an independent research paper that's going to be launched, uh, we commence in the seventh of November in partnership with Trussell Trust around this. Um, an increase to fuel awards, um, and that's in line with the energy cap rise. And then proposed revised eligibility criteria, um, which have been put forward in the report today. So the report details the reasoning behind the revised criteria and we'd welcome member feedback on this. Um, our intention is to launch the criteria this winter. And this will include a dedicated webpage and communications to both key partners, services and third sector organisations across the city. Um, so a summary of the key changes and reasoning is provided below. So introduction of low income as a brighter, a broader criterion, where previously only those on benefits were accepted, recognizing the rise in in work poverty and current cost of living crisis. So in the new proposed eligibility um criteria, um, you'll see that the um the low income as a broader criterion is included in that. Um, one of the things that we discovered was that the uh the uh low income threshold previously was set at ten thousand. So if you think somebody earning ten thousand, you know, that that they're going to be in significant hardship, but they could earn just over that and we would be denying them. And we don't want to be in that place now. You know, you could be earning twenty thousand and still be struggling i- in the current climate, I would argue. Um, we want to introduce no refusals. So we don't want to say to somebody, no, you can't access the scheme. Uh, uh, and that's that. We want to be able to support them no matter what. Um, so awards and or quality signposting will be provided to all customers um within the remit of L W S S uh criteria and the wider welfare offering Leeds. Um, this combined with an improved webpage with published eligibility criteria as well as an application form within built criteria will mean that residents will know whether they're eligible or not before they apply, which will help to manage expectations. I think greater emphasis on wraparound support introduced to help address the needs of vulnerable customers longer term um as appropriate. Um, and I think crucially, introduction of a person centred intensive support programme that will connect customers to wider support services in Leeds, for example, with debt management, benefits advice or budgeting support. This programme will particularly support those that return for support, uh, working with the customer to access support in a way that best meets their needs. This may include a package of longer term awards until they're in a position to best receive this support. It's anticipated that this programme would be piloted from early twenty twenty three. Um, as I previously mentioned, removal of the ten thousand pound low income threshold and introduction of the variable low income threshold. Um, this will bring Leeds in line with what other core cities are practising with their um welfare support schemes. Um, and that's using information from organisations like Joseph Roundtree in terms of what is the best um sort of support that we can put into place for certain family makeups um and uh sort of contacts in which they apply. Introduction of new application methods, so the online application form for self referrals um and supported referrals via community hub sites and trusted partner agencies. So a customer will be able to walk into a community hub site or into third sector um organisation sites and they'll be able to be supported to get that application in face to face there and then. That's not been a an option previously. Um, introduction of a digital award, so recognizing the impact of digital exclusion and the barriers this presents when accessing support services. So an example of a pilot that we've we've just literally launched in the last few weeks in partnership with Good Things Foundation. Um, we can offer free SIM cards with credit um available and and text and uh calls, sorry, for a set period of time. In some instances, this is for a few years. Um, so those people have got that support for a long period of time. Um, what we're doing is uh because that's available through community hubs and libraries, we can connect that to the hundred percent digital offer. So if somebody is digitally excluded, they're not experienced in using a tablet or getting online, we can make sure that we can help them to do that as well. Um, and then the introduction of new payment methods. So again, going back to the cash grant pilot. Um, this full report's going to be published in November, but cash and bank transfers um might be introduced as payment methods where appropriate. So one of the innovative things around that is that a customer, if they get that cash grant award, they can get text PIN codes to their phone, they can PIN code in at a nearest participating ATM and the ATM can give them the money. Some of the customers really like this, majority did in fact, but some reported that they found it a bit complex. So we've gone back to that organisation that provides it, consists the bank and asked if they can provide direct bank transfers as well. Um, and they're looking to introduce that if we take the scheme forward. So in terms of next steps, finally, um, we're going to launch the revised policy document shortly. Um, we're going to consider the budget, make sure that that's reviewed, demand is monitored and efficient, and any efficiencies and savings are costed in uh and and taken into account. Um, but we also need to provide a clear indication of budgetary requirements for financial years moving forward, because demand is increasing significantly. Um, review of fuel awards, uh, fuel awards, sorry, so that as the energy cap rises, um, we're we're making sure that we're rising in line with that. Um, if we can afford to do that, um, review payment methods and develop and implement the online form. Um, and that's it.
It is that you've reflected back on the feedback from the people that have used the service and you've improved it. And when you do the next one, you'll improve it again. And I mean, it's, I think it's an emerging way of doing things and you you have to be congratulated that you're actually brave enough to accept that what was there maybe wasn't perfect and you've moved it on. And I think that's to be you have to be congratulated for doing that, because there are a lot of other organisations, not both nationally and locally, that could maybe learn that lesson that you can always improve. We can always improve and make it better for our citizens. So questions, councillor Cunningham?
Thanks, Chair. Um, I've got a couple of points and as I say, some did overlap with the previous agenda item. Um, I really welcome the um the cash, the cash grant pilot. Um, and I would just um issue probably a word of caution about the bank transfer aspect, just where um we know that people are already running in overdrafts and sometimes those kind of transfers can just be automatically eaten up and people can't access those funds. Um, going on to the um digging into the policy review a little bit. Um, I'd be really interested to know about the work that's being done um on the identity requirements, because that is something that has cropped up quite a lot for my um residents in Armley, not having appropriate I D or um photo I D to access certain services. Or or indeed, I've had to help a number of my um residents um access birth certificates and things like that, that they didn't have access to. And then my third question is around um accessibility of the information in terms of alternative formats. I'm just interested to know, are we making sure that the resources are accessible for people who might require those alternative formats because of um any disabilities? Thank you.
Yeah, thanks councillor Cunningham. So I think for the work that we're doing, we're hoping that um the new criteria that we've introduced will reduce the requirement for um assessments. And in line, it will, that will reduce the requirement to have to come in to site to produce proofs of I D and um proofs of income, um essentially. So we're anticipating that should reduce by up to about sixty percent. Um, where the significant award's in place, there will still be an I D requirement. So that's coming into sight at a local community hub site um and just providing that that those documents is literally just a quick check to say, yes, that's fine. And we can move ahead with the uh with the award. What I'm hoping is that when we bring third sector partners online um and we have this trusted partner relationship with them, that can be done at other sites as well. And we can take their word that that they know those documents have been seen. So it's not limited necessarily to a council officer having to see those documents. So we're we're reducing significantly the requirement to produce the I D. But we're also trying to, you know, where it is still required, cater for that in a more diverse way.
Yeah, thank you.
Sorry, there's the accessibility as well, wasn't there? Apologise, yeah. Um, yeah, we are considering the accessibility not just being online. I mean, previously, the 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 um service was accessed through the telephone. Um, we're working with the um comms and marketing department to make sure that we've got various different channels there to sort of promote the service, if that makes sense. So we'll have telephone, we'll have online, but we'll have different methods of marketing, the the new look scheme as well.
Thanks, Chair. Yeah, I was meaning more in terms of kind of easy read documents or videos, you know, for the um kind of other impairments that people may have.
Yeah, we'll 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 take those considerations into account and make sure that those people are catered for as well, yeah.
This is possibly quite an easy one. Um, just noting uh point twenty seven about the partnership with um His Hisense about refurbishing goods. Um, has that been thoroughly communicated over? It's a really good, important story. And as we're moving towards suppose, or trying to move towards a zero waste leads, that kind of thing needs to be amplified so that hopefully others might get on board and do the same kind of thing.
Uh, I think it's a fair point and maybe we haven't sung from the rooftops about it as much as we possibly could have done. Um, it is a really good new scheme and um it's it's them having sort of refurbished, renovated goods that they're then donating to us. They've made a longstanding commitment to increase the amount of the white goods they're going to give us over time. Um, I think that relationship came directly through Tom actually. Um, so it's really nice to see that that's that's working. Um. So yeah, we'll have to take that away and uh consider how we sort of promote the fact that that's in place more, yeah.
Is, you know, been thorough and uh let's hope your your lunch, uh, you know, meets the needs of the public out there, because we are here to help the public and hopefully you'll be in that. So in that case, the recommendations that we had based on, it was to consider the update and provide feedback. Well, we've got some comments from that. And consider the proposed revised policy document and make any recommendations. Well, we've talked about making it easier to understand, use, et cetera. So thank you very much for coming along today. Particularly, I didn't have you down on my list, Nick. I don't know whether you stood in at the last minute and you've picked up the baton and ran or whether or not you were a few all along. But if it's the former, well done. And if it's the second, thanks for coming along anyway.
Thank you councillor Anderson. Yeah, there was debate between Lee and I, who was going to present and it was me, I sort of stepped in at the end, so yeah.
Thanks. Right, okay. Thanks very much. So if we can move on to item nine now, Becky?
Um, yeah, it's just the the work programme. If I can just draw members' attention to the additional remote board meeting that's been scheduled for Thursday, the first of December at ten thirty A M. You should have all received an invitation to that, but it's um just to make you aware that it it is taking place. Um, and also you should have received an invitation for a remote working group on the role of responsibilities, the housing service, which is due to take place on the fourth of November.
And uh the majority, if not all of the meeting, uh, to be interesting and something that you can now go back to your residence and explain things, either what you've argued for today and but the promises that have been made by officers, if we can, we can then hold them to account. Councillor Actar?
Chair, I'm not sure if this is the right forum, but what I raised at the beginning of the meeting about the postcode and the jobs uh and opportunities within the city, that's something I think needs to come to some sort of forum where we can have a some sort of discussion and if possible, if possible, also to invite some of the uh the employers in the city as well.
I think Becky can give.
Yeah, it's just to say that within the remit of the scrutiny board, jobs and skills really falls within um the Triple I G board. So they look at it through the lens of inclusive growth. I I'm sure we can report back to this board in terms of some of the work that they're doing on that agenda to make sure that that you're up to speed on that.
You will be making sure that councillor Trussell is aware of that have been raised and he will see a copy of the minutes that were done. It's good. So thank you all very much. Thank you for your attendance. Thank you.